I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the secretary please call the roll?
Hannah Braun.
Here.
Timothy Cummings.
Here.
Jamie Falco.
Here.
Luis Figueroa.
Here.
Lori Herrick.
Lee Wu Hong.
Here.
Lori Lacks. Wilbur Pan.
Here.
And Heather Glass.
Here. Please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussion, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. All right, good evening. Our agenda is a little different than usual. We are going to go directly into the good of the cause for the public. After that, we will be going into... We're doing committee reports before that?
No, we'll go right into executive session.
Okay. After that, we are going right into executive session, the time of which is expected to be three hours.
Correct.
Okay. All right. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board shall provide a period for the public comment at every meeting of the Board. Residents are welcome to speak up to three minutes. Timing will be kept by the Board's secretary. We would just like to request that when you step up to the podium, you state your name and address, unless you are a student. Is...oh, before we start, I would like to say, right now, it doesn't look like it will run over an hour, but because of the length of the closed session that we need tonight, we are going to...if the public portion goes to an hour, we are going to pause. We will go into closed session, and we will reopen three hours later. We respect and want everyone to have their opportunity to speak. We also have a massive amount of work to work on this evening, which is all probably the content of why the public is here to speak. So we want time to consider that. Just wanted to be upfront. That's kind of how the schedule's going to have to go to be able to get done everything that we need to do. All right. That all being said, is there anyone this evening wishing to address the Board? Come on up. Thank you.
Tim O'Neil, 15 Carter Road. First, I want to address the fact that we are, again, here discussing cuts due to alleged funding issues. I know a fair amount about school funding. I'm an educator, and I've been at many Board meetings discussing issues like this. I'm really confused about East Brunswick's current situation. If you do a little research, going back 10 years, the district was getting about $18 million in state aid, one of the two major funding areas. This year, we're getting $38 million. So we've had an increase over 10 years of $20 million in state funding. Yet again, we somehow can't maintain what we've had in the past. Even just last year, we got $33 million in state funding, and it increased this year to $38, and we made cuts. I can tell you, in the same time, my property taxes have gone up about 25%. So the district is simply getting more and more funding, but seems to be able to do less and less with it. The issue here is that the problem isn't the funding, the problem is the management of the funding. That seems clear, based on the math. Specifically, I'm here to talk about the possible cuts to the sports programs. So I'll apologize to the Bound Monroe family, so I know I have a lot to say. But when you're looking at making cuts to middle school and possibly even lower-level high school sports, you're looking at a group of students who all lost a full year of elementary school to COVID, which obviously is not the fault of the school district, but it is the school district's responsibility to help them recover. And in my opinion, this is not getting the job done. Instead, these same students were...some of them bounced to one middle school for a year, and then to a junior high, or whatever you want to call it now, and put it in a temporary structure. And now, year after year after year, they get hit with something new, some other obstacle that they have to overcome, instead of help getting back to normal, which is what we would expect from a school district with the reputation of East Brunswick. So now, the fact that you want to take away one part of their lives that gives them normalcy, that gives them socialization, is, to me, inexcusable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tim.
My name is Neil Shaw. I live at One Jennifer Court. I'm probably going to be repeating a lot what the gentleman here just said. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight. I want to talk about something that means a lot to me and to so many families in this town, and that's youth sports. I know that we're here tonight because the district is facing some tough financial decisions, and I don't envy the position that you guys are in. But I have to ask, what happens to our kids if we are starting to cut school sports and raising fees on rec leagues like Fastbreak? Fastbreak basketball has been a staple in East Brunswick for 28 years. So many of you and your children have gone through the program, whether it was regular Fastbreak or our award-winning buddy-ball program. Like a lot of parents in this town, I was roped into coaching because they needed volunteers, and somehow, I've been standing on the sideline for the last 10 years. Two years ago, I joined the Fastbreak Board of Trustees to give back to the league that gave me thousands and other EB families so many memories, including the emotional rollercoaster of living and dying by one of my son's famous three-pointers. If you know, you know. But here's the problem: Fastbreak, like every other youth sports program, is feeling the pressure of rising costs. We do everything we can to keep the fees low so that every kid can play. This year, after our season started, we were hit with additional charges that has left us scrambling and trying to cover. As I mentioned, we all understand the position that the school board is facing, but if the fees to Fastbreak keep increasing significantly for the next year, it would be a cost prohibitive for our tax-paying residents to have their children participate in the league. I know cutting school sports won't magically solve the budget crisis, and I know tough decisions have to be made. But before anyone shrugs off raising rec league fees as a quick fix, think about what's at stake. Sports give kids structure, confidence, and a place to belong. They keep kids active and keep them out of trouble, and let's be real, they keep them off their screens for an hour or two a day. They help with mental health, teaching, life skills, and even reducing substance abuse risk. We all know that East Brunswick is a sports town. These programs aren't just games, they're a big part of what makes this community strong. So before deciding how to balance the budget, I ask you to think long term. If we make sports less accessible now, what's the cost to our kids and our community down the road? Call of action to really be is that I know that moving a few budget line items here and there may make sense right now, but in the future, it really does hurt the community. And we would hope that you guys all think really hard and long about what that decision today or in the future is going to do to our community long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Good evening. Eric Varga, 37, Clearview Road. I apologize, I typed something out for you guys. Good evening, members of the School Board, administrators, parents, and students. My name is Eric Varga, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our students, our families, and our community regarding the proposed budget cuts to middle school sports. This is not just about athletics, this is about opportunity, engagement, and the overall well-being of our students. Middle school sports are more than just games. They provide a foundation for teamwork, discipline, and resilience, qualities that shape students far beyond the playing field. For many, sports serve as their motivation to stay engaged in school, maintain good grades, and develop leadership skills that will carry them into high school and beyond. Cutting these programs would not just eliminate after-school activities, it would take away vital support system that helps students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Research consistently shows that students who participate in extracurricular activities, including sports, perform better in school, have higher attendance rates, and are less likely to engage in risky behaviors. These programs also play a critical role in students' mental health, providing an outlet for stress, teaching perseverance, and fostering a sense of belonging. In a time when we are seeing increased levels of anxiety and depression amongst young people, removing one of their healthiest and most productive outlets is not the answer. Additionally, middle school sports are often the first exposure many students have to organize athletics. For those who may not have access to club or travel teams due to financial constraints, school sports are their only opportunity to participate. Cutting these programs would disproportionately affect students from lower-income families, widening the gap in access to extracurricular activities, and further deepening inequities within our district. I understand the challenges of balancing a budget. I'm actually a school administrator myself. I appreciate the difficult decisions you face. However, I urge you to consider the long-term cost of eliminating middle school sports. The benefits far outweigh the expenses. If we remove these programs, we risk losing students who would otherwise find their passion, their confidence, and their sense of purpose through athletics. Tonight, I ask you to think about the faces of the students who rely on these programs: the young athlete who found their confidence through a baseball team, the student who learned about teamwork and leadership on a soccer field, the child who looks forward to practice every day because it's their safe space. Let's work together to ensure that middle school sports remain a part of our district's commitment to the whole child education. Because when we invest in our students, we build a stronger, healthier, and more successful community for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Good evening. Jim Logan, 30, Myrtle Road, East Brunswick. I think both Tim and Neil and Eric said it very beautifully, so I'm not going to repeat that. I'm obviously here to advocate on behalf of all the middle school sports, not just baseball, which I currently oversee with two other parents in terms of the baseball booster club. I've been involved in this township with youth sports for now 14 years, and for the third year now overseeing the booster club. And what I could tell you is, while these children won't be out on the field, at least playing real games for another two and a half months, we're running twice a week indoor sessions right now at the high school. And we've had over 40 participants. We've done it three nights so far, we just got started. We've had over 40 participants each of the three nights, and 2/3 of those participants have been 7th and 8th graders. And the passion, the joy that you see in their faces, the excitement...I think Eric hit on it beautifully when he said the confidence factor. We're not talking about the students who do very well already playing a sport, we're talking about the students who need that confidence, who are trying to embrace a sport, who are trying to learn and aspire to someday play on JV or varsity. And I think it's also about a sense of community, because while you clearly understand everything we're saying, right? No one wants to be in this situation, as I said a year ago, under different circumstances. And yes, the pain has to be solved from somewhere, but I think fundamentally, you want to maintain that sense of community, that sense of pride, of these players eventually playing for the JV, playing for the varsity, having those lifelong friendships and memories, and the pride of playing for East Brunswick. And if we eliminate these types of programs now, unfortunately, what we're directly doing is we're enriching the pay-to-play businesses in other parts of the community that are not East Brunswick. So I really implore you just to try to take that into consideration. We've got such a good groundswell at the middle school right now, and if we eliminate that, we're unfortunately going to push these young men and in other sports for softball, young ladies, and basketball, and all the other programs that have middle school sports, we're really doing a disservice to why we're here, and that's to enrich these young men and young women's future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Michael Mistruzzo, 27, Colonial Drive. So I stand here, both as a parent of two kids and a mentor to many, through my service as a travel baseball coach for East Brunswick for six years. When I heard there was discussion about possibly cutting not just the middle school baseball program, but other activities within the middle school or freshman class, I wanted to speak out this evening as a member of this community for almost a decade and a half. It should be understood that these programs provide vital social skills for our students in their development of teamwork, collaboration, and creativity outside the traditional classroom setting. Further, these programs help us continue to demonstrate the strength of our school system and be competitive in attracting and retaining families within East Brunswick. So to put it in perspective, when my wife and I moved here prior to starting a family, one of the main sources of attraction was that East Brunswick was a blue-ribbon school system, both because of its academic and also because its wide variety of programs available for our students. Cutting programs within the middle school or freshman grades does not help set our kids up for success. In fact, it removes a very critical foundation that our kids need so they can help develop the skills for time management, communication, multitasking, and many others that are required when our kids enter into high school in preparation for college. I respect the fact that there are many challenges with the allocation of the budget, and I understand that funding, you know, sometimes can be limited. But what I urge the Board to do is to try and stand up and petition for a greater funding allocation so that we are not faced with difficult decisions for the future of our kids and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Bear with me, I just got new glasses. Danielle Vietto, 23, Bradford Road. Dear Board members, I stand before you today acknowledging that this is not an easy time of year. As someone also in budget season, I don't envy the difficult decisions you must make. But I also can't ignore the fact that just about a year ago, we began learning about the unfortunate mistakes and perhaps the short-sighted decisions made by the leadership at this very table without accountability. In response, we started showing up and asking questions, questions that in some cases still haven't been properly answered. It's incredibly difficult to feel trust in this leadership when time and time again, we uncover lies and half-truths. We can no longer ignore the fact that transparency and honesty have been in short supply. It's hard to place our confidence in decisions when we see this pattern unfold. So I stand here again, reminding some of you at this table that you were once where I am now. You had the same questions, you had the same critiques, you wondered if people were truly thinking outside the box, you wondered if there was real accountability, you wondered if elected officials were pushing back on those in paid positions. As a Bound Monroe parent, and as a parent who attended as many meetings as possible since April of last year, I am asking you once again to take this process seriously. All nine of you have a unique power, a power that is both intimidating and invaluable, and I hope you recognize that. Now, if I put my professional hat on and I remain objective, I understand that closing Bound Monroe and redistricting may make fiscal sense. But as the people we elected, I'm going to ask you to ask these tough questions tonight. What has been done over the past year to address these issues proactively? Since April, when it became clear that the state funding were challenging, what steps have been done to prepare for them? Are we just starting this conversation tonight, and if so, that's also short-sighted? This isn't about numbers on a spreadsheet. If Bound Monroe closes, 2nd graders today could face multiple moves, once in 4th grade, then again in 5th grade. And beyond the logistics, let's not forget why you're sitting here on the table in the first place. It's for the children. And let's not forget that Bound Monroe has an amazing heart, a vibrant, unique community that nurtures its students in a way that can't be easily replicated. To diminish that would be a disservice to everyone involved. Closing Bound Monroe isn't just a matter of numbers, it's about a soul of a school that has been a cornerstone for so many families. So let's talk about that. How will this impact their mental health? How will this impact our teachers? I can tell you firsthand that, as it stands today, our district does not have the capacity to handle behavioral challenges effectively. With increased class sizes, I could only imagine how much worse it will become. So I stand before you today and hope that each of you will evaluate, question, and push back the powers that be.
We voted for you for this. Thank you, Danielle. Sorry, Jeff.
Hi. Jackie Peña-Cavalini, 6 Myrtle Road.
Could you repeat your last name, please?
Sure. Peña-Cavalini.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I am here speaking for my Bound Monroe child in the crucial importance the school staff and the Bound community have and continues to have in her education. Bound was a gift sent from heaven to us. My child attended kindergarten at a Christian private school as a solution during COVID, not to have remote learning. However, it ended up being the first mistake. My daughter encountered bullying coming home after kids told her to go kill herself, and staff not protecting her or offering solutions. She transferred to a charter school, where not only faced more bullying, but also discrimination, as well as falling behind academically, and staff not communicating effectively to me. Finally, she transferred to Bound, and she was not only welcomed, but they took the necessary steps to provide a safe environment, to show her she's valuable, to work at her pace while effectively gaining her trust. Mrs. Orinshak, her 2nd-grade teacher, showered her with kindness, where actions show her value as a student, as a human, encouraged her strengths, and worked with her in the areas where she was striving, and rewarded the areas where she excelled. Mrs. Budnaski utilized strategies to start raising her reading level and provided tips to work in conjunction at home. Mrs. Kabasky encouraged open communication between staff, family, and my child's feelings doctor, as she calls her, her favorite therapist. Ms. Russo, in her 3rd grade, continued what was started and recognized her strength and was able to continue her current building trust. Now in 4th grade, Mrs. Maron, who is last year's Teacher of the Year, is amplifying her strength, appreciates her personality, and has provided a safe place that she loves to attend. For the first time since preschool, my child loves to go to school because Bound is her safe place outside of home. Because of Bound, my daughter is not at a statistic in the news from bullying or possibly suicide. Because of Bound, my daughter is striving and feels that she's accomplished. Yes, we are the smallest school by comparison. Yes, for you, we are an expense in the budget. However, closing this school will create a terrible disservice to scatter our children across the district and the possibilities to lose such an amazing team of educators and a wonderful stock principal, Mrs. Christina. Even though my daughter is about to graduate and go to Hammer Show, I will forever be grateful that they saved my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Jennifer Figueroa, 101 Rus Lane. I did not plan on speaking tonight, but I came last week to the Board meeting to speak on something, something wonderful that I had experienced at the PTSA meeting. And as I sat in this chair here, I could not believe the budget presentation that I heard. I felt like I was back a year ago. And my biggest question was, in a year, what had you done to prepare and plan for this year? And I felt, based on that presentation, that there was pretty much no thought. We got through last year, and then that's it. Last year's cuts and budget problems were told that there would be the least impact on students. This year's presentation, I felt that it's going to have an amazing impact on students, amazing in a terribly negative way. Right there on that screen, it says, "East Brunswick Public Schools: Excellence in Academics, Athletics, and Arts." And all I heard last week were cuts to academic, athletics, and arts. You might as well take that saying down and just put it, "East Brunswick Schools: We are average." And I also would like to know why tonight, there's an amazing presenter over at Hughes that is a district presentation, so it's not, it was one school or one sports team, but a district presentation. It was actually talked about at last week's meeting, and here we are at this meeting tonight where you're taking people away from it. I apologize, because I'm going to walk out now, because it starts at 7:00, and I would really like to see it. He's an amazing speaker on raising healthy children. So here I am, spacing my time to come here, and I'm listening, and I'm just seeing that. And every cut that I hear, cutting a school, closing a school down, cutting athletics, cutting arts, I mean, I don't even know if that's come up, but last year, it was a one-year forgiveness. So this year, I'm assuming that 4th grade arts program, music program's going to be cut, because that's what it was told last year, that it was a temporary forgiveness. So this year, I'm assuming that it wasn't talked about, because it's already been a done deal, I'm not even sure. But I mean, I find it to be a disgrace that it's excellence in any of those things that we're talking, all we're talking about is cutting those things.
Good evening. Jeff Winston, 44 Fresh Pond Road, East Brunswick, New Jersey. I appreciate some of the comments tonight. President Guas, you started out this meeting, and I'm going to paraphrase, you said, "Your closed session will be for much of what we are discussing here." It's interesting. In the agenda, it says the closed session is for attorney-client privilege matters concerning employees, employer rights, and finances. I want to quote Dr. Valeski in a TAPP article, where he stated in an interview, he said, "The administration and Board of Aire are committed to transparency and sharing information with the community regarding the school budget," which became the subject of controversy last year. When I stopped at that paragraph, I was extremely excited. It looked like he changed your ways in terms of getting things out of secrecy, followed by the following comment. "This is not an emergency meeting," continued Valeski. "We are trying to make sure the Board has the information it needs before the next budget update on February 13th." That's a far cry from an agenda item of attorney-client privilege. Once again, you're using your weaponized closed session to keep things from the public. The public deserves to hear everything you're going to say about Bound, everything you're going to say about athletics, arts, and academics, and everything else that goes along with that. Stop hiding in that back room, and we have a right to hear from our elected officials, their thought process, as we make decisions on who we want as stewards to a $200 million-plus budget. So while you sit there staring at me blankly, know that we're not going to tolerate the secret sessions anymore. I'm looking forward to hearing and reading the notes from that closed-session meeting, and if any word of budget or anything is placed in there you have violated NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12B 1 through 9, stop using closed session to have conversations that affect everybody in this audience. You can't hide from your mistakes. It is no secret that healthcare costs would have gone up, that salaries would have gone up, and you knew all of this last year when you went through the budget, as Mr. Giuliani stares at his screen. But the fact of the matter is, you've done nothing to prepare for this. There's been no measurement, no accountability. Need I remind the candidates who are recently elected, and some of you voiced your concerns on all of this? Speak up. If you see something enclosed, do not let these people bully you to believe that it belongs there. There are nine very distinct reasons why closed-session items exist. Attorney-client privilege is a lie. I call on legal counsel right now as representing our district to make sure that they stay in compliance. This town deserves to hear every foolish lie that comes out of your mouth as we consider what happens next for this Board of Education and particularly the administration. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Maggie Georges from Garfield, East Brunswick. So last week, once again, we had a really fun presentation, and I took the feedback that was given as contact your legislators. I wrote an email, I sent it out, did a lot of research, and I couldn't believe the research I found. I found that the last date for comments was January 17. Did anyone from East Brunswick... They were supposed to be sent before January 17. And I found this out through a Monroe Post. Monroe has an advocacy committee, and they're completely invested in sending emails, "Hey, guys, you know, reach out to your Trenton, let's go to Trenton." They've been so proactive. How have we been proactive this year? We have not been proactive. Like, we're telling people to send emails to legislators, and it's done! It's done! The budget is done for this year. And what's even more frustrating is last week also it was said that brace yourself for the next two to three years. Brace yourselves. So we're going to get cuts every single year. And all we're going, so if we're just looking at a budget and just figuring out cuts, you know, anyone could do that, right? Anyone can do that. I can look at a budget and say, you know, "This month, I'm not going to pay my mortgage because I don't have money." All right? It takes another level to figure out, okay, we're coming up with cuts, how are we going to come up with revenue? Anyone, you know, really honestly, to manage a budget is really not that difficult, you know? You could just say, "I'm going to cut this, cut this," especially if I'm detached to it. I'm detached from Bowman Row, I can easily just close out a school, right? How about you go spend a week there at Bowman Row and then tell me you're going to go cut it? Okay? It's very easy to cut when we're so detached. So I ask you, what have you done this last year, and what are you going to do in the next two, three years, besides look at a budget that's given to you? Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. All right, I'm going to close the public portion. Sorry. Need to find the phone. All right, we are going into closed session, we have a need. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12B, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as listed on tonight's agenda, and whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be three hours, no action tonight, right?
No action.
After which, no action will be taken. Can I have a motion for closed, please? All right, Tim and Wilbur, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries, we're in closed.